Welcome to Troy Planning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, July 13. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Erlich?
Here.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Here.
Mr. Titterington?
Here.
Mr. Cappers?
Here.
Mr. Wolke?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, we have our minutes distributed to us prior to this meeting for our June 22 meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions of those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Mr. McGary?
I'll second.
Mr. Westmeyer, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. First matter of business is the proposed amendment to the zoning code related to historic preservation overlay district. Staff, you gave a comprehensive report two weeks ago at the public hearing. Is there anything you want to add to that?
On the third page of the action item, there was a clarification for 1143.22R for the appeals section. Mr. Wolke had that question, and I wanted to make sure that that was clarified today.
I notice it is correct.
What that does is correct what you proposed at the public hearing at a point that Mr. Wolke found for us. Mr. Wolke, thank you very much for your attention to detail. Appreciate that. Other than that, was there any changes to what you proposed at our last meeting?
There's no other changes.
At the public hearing, there was some discussion by the public of matters that were not within the proposed amendment, and that is the expansion of the planning commission from seven members to nine members. I lay it out there for the planning commission numbers. Are any of you interested in discussing that?
I have a few comments that I'd like to...
Go ahead.
So, you know, we brought up, you wanted to know about how I felt about the zoning changes, and I missed the last meeting, but I watched the meeting and didn't see any comments in regards to the actual zoning changes that were proposed by staff. So, I think we should just move forward with that. However, as far as the comments made during the public hearing, I do not support a change in the makeup of the PC as was suggested. Troy continually receives kudos on our downtown, and other communities come here to find out what we are doing to create such a busy and vibrant atmosphere. They look at our buildings and are awed by the condition they are in and the care taken by obviously proud property owners. We are continually running at close to 100 percent occupancy. Buildings do not sit empty for long. Other communities want to know how we accomplish that. Troy is a desirable place to be, and it is our desire and goal for that to remain. The zoning department and the planning commission work incredibly close with property owners, Troy Main Street, and Troy Community Works to do what we can to assist in their endeavors. The Cass Building is just one recent example of this working partnership. The planning commission is given the authority by the zoning code to bring in consultants and experts, and that has been done many times over the years and will continue. This recent discord seems to be related entirely to the situation with the old IOOF building, and while some people are not happy with the decision made to issue a demo permit, there are others that applauded it. This decision followed the zoning code guidelines and came after a prolonged effort by the property owner, city staff, and downtown stakeholders to find an alternate solution. City administration, the development council, and city staff worked with the property owner on many different scenarios, trying to find possible solutions. At least a couple of offers were made, but once due diligence was done by the investors, those offers were withdrawn. Local developers and structural engineers looked at the building and walked away not interested. If I'm not mistaken, this building is still for sale, correct, Tim?
That's correct.
No municipality is going to get 100 percent agreement on everything, but I believe the city of Troy is prospering and succeeding, including our historic downtown area. We've seen wonderful rehab, redevelopment, and amazing reuse. The concerns that we don't have a bar are unfounded. We haven't had one for several decades, and all you have to do is look around our downtown and see that these old buildings are loved and cared for by the property owners. The zoning code is in place to assist and preserve, to provide continuity and guidance for property owners, and the PC is in place to ensure that this happens. The fact that the city administration and/or the PC, the planning commission, is being accused of destroying or tearing down our downtown is frankly uncalled for. Each of these PC members that sits here today was chosen by the previous mayor for what they brought to the table. They've done what they were asked to do, and I thank each of you for the work you've done. That's all I have to say on the matter, and I will proceed by making a positive, move to make a positive recommendation to council on the zoning code changes.
Are you accepting any more comments from the public because of...
No, ma'am.
Did what?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
There's a motion before the planning commission for the positive recommendations from Troy City Council for the amendments to the historic preservation overlay district. Is there a second? Mr. Westmeyer, seconds. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Next, we have a historic district occupation for 210 East Water Street. Staff have a report.
Yes, sir. This is the owner of 210 East Water Street requesting the planning commission to consider the installation of a six-foot-tall privacy fence along the north block line and a six-foot-tall chain link fence near the west and south block lines. The property is located in the M2 Light Industrial District. So, the M2 Light Industrial District in our fence code does have a maximum fence height of eight feet. However, it's still subject to the additional design standards implemented by the zoning code. Under zoning code section 1143.229, standards for site improvements, this section prohibits chain link to be installed in the historic district. After further staff review, we looked at how we treated these particular requests in the past, and chain link has not been permitted, I would say, in the last, at least four years. So, staff recommends denial of the proposed fence installation based on the following: It does not meet the standards for site improvement for zoning code 1143.229. That would include mark...
Any questions, or staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Do I understand saying correctly, we are being asked to violate the ordinance?
No, that's not correct. The ordinance states that we do not allow chain link in this...
Right. What I'm saying is the petitioner has requested us to grant them a permit to violate the ordinance.
That's correct, yes.
And the fence has already been installed?
That's correct. It was installed without historic review and a fence requirement by the planning commission.
Is that present? Anybody who can say anything?
Yes.
On the floor, state your name and address.
Mark White, 210 East Water Street is my business.
And my name is Joe Fulker. I'm here on behalf of Mark White. I know he would like to be heard on this matter. Mark White is the sole member of Retail Consulting Network, which does business as Blinds by Mark and does own the property at 210 East Water Street. I would like to first quote Development Director Tim Davis in his memorandum of yesterday to this commission regarding the proposed changes to the zoning code. He stated that "The intent of the historic preservation overlay is to protect and promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the public through preservation and enhancement of architectural styles, historically significant districts, sites, and buildings, enhance property values throughout the historic district." Mr. White represents that the fence of this property meets all of its goals and the intent of the historic preservation overlay. Firstly, Mark White, again, operates Blinds by Mark. He is a well-respected and regarded businessman in the community. He specializes in custom window treatments, blinds, and shades. Blinds by Mark purchased this property in 2020. It is a neat old property. It's an incredibly solid construction. It's a large industrial warehouse. It is bordered by the railroad tract on the east side of the building, the soup kitchen to the west side, and an alley to the south. I believe that it was originally used as a warehouse by the old Hayner Distilling Company for storage of whiskey bottles. Mark bought this property in 2020, and he has really cleaned it up. At the time it was purchased, there was an existing wire fence that ran from the west end of the building and connected to a fence along the south line of the soup kitchen property. That fence was in sad shape, and that was also a chain link fence. It had been busted through, torn through, and was an obvious hazard with the remains of jagged metal poles. There was a large tree and mound of overgrowth where the original fence met the adjoining property line. Mark had that tree and the brush removed, and the ground leveled and graded. He ultimately contracted with Quality Landscaping and Fence to install a new, far better fence. It was their agreement that Quality would seek all necessary permits. Obviously, that did not happen, which is partly why we are here today. This property certainly does have a history, and that is its use as a warehouse. Mark continues to use the property consistent with its history and uses the building primarily to store his business inventory. He has regular shipments delivered and transported to and from the building. It is certainly appropriate for an industrial warehouse to have a chain link fence. The property, as Mr. Ida Miller noted, is zoned as M2 Light Industrial, and under Troy Revised Ordinance 521.07, such properties are permitted up to an eight-foot fence. Again, at the time of purchase, there was an existing dilapidated and dangerous fence, which was obviously incident to the building's long-term use as a warehouse. So, this fence does serve to enhance the architectural style and use of the building, and that is use as an industrial warehouse. The fence enhances the property value and promotes public safety. The area fenced is essentially the west gravelled side door of the building. It's an obvious parking area for the building. It abuts to the soup kitchen parking lot. Mark's property has been used as a thoroughfare by vehicles traveling the alley to the south of the property to and from the soup kitchen. Mark has had unknown vehicles parked in what is now the fenced area for weeks at a time. There's been evidence of various other trespasses upon his property. There was even an incident during the strawberry festival this year where another individual was selling parking spaces in what is now the fenced area without Mark's express permission. Additionally, recently, a patron had his, a patron of the building had his gas lines to his vehicle cut while he was parked in what is now the fenced area. By removing the previous dangerous and partial fence, replacing it with a full, safe fence that provides privacy for parking to the north, as well as security for the building, the health, safety, and general welfare of the district are certainly served. Simultaneously, Mark's property value is increased, thereby increasing the value of neighboring properties. The fence is also obviously advisable from an insurance liability standpoint, and Mark has been advised accordingly by his insurance agent. From my review of the zoning maps, it appears that with the exception of a .327 acre parcel, which is D08101814, and that parcel is vacant land owned by the Hobart Cabinet Company and is immediately south of the river dam, but with the exception of that property, Mark's property is the only property within the historic district that is zoned as industrial. It is the only building within the historic district zoned industrial. So, the application of the fence restrictions of the historic district to Mark's property is quite unique. Does the fact that Mark's industrial building, the fact that it is located within the historic district deprive him of the rights of fencing he would have under the industrial zoning? I would ask that this commission finds that the answer to that question is no and finds that the historic zoning regulations are not cumulative to the industrial zoning regulations with respect to this fence and this unique zoning of this property. Otherwise, Mark is deprived of the full use and benefit of his industrial building, which I would submit is contrary to the intent of the zoning code and the historic preservation overlay. Alternatively, the zoning amendments that the commission has just decided to recommend to Troy City Council would delete and eliminate the ban on chain link fences within the historic district and instead creates a mechanism by which major and minor alterations are defined and the applications for such alterations are reviewed. I would submit that under the commission's recommended amendments, the fence would be entirely appropriate and not banned by the zoning code. So, for that reason, should the commission decide not to grant the permit for the fence today, I would ask the commission to table its decision until after city council acts on the recommended amendments.
Mr. Chairman?
Could I ask, staff, is that correct, that under the proposed overlay, that the fence would be legal?
That is not correct. It essentially just moved those requirements into our design manual that we are working on finalizing, and that will come before it is reviewed. It'll still be a ban on chain link.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I sympathize with him. It's a nice-looking fence, and, you know, it would be nice to take it ahead with, but I can't see, I don't see how we can vote to violate the ordinance.
Well, Mr. Chair, just some information that may...
Let's finish up with that. Do you have any further comments?
Well, Mr. Wolke, in answer to your question, I would refer you to page 26 of the redline version of the proposed amendments, which is entitled Standards for Site Improvements. It goes on to the following page, page 27, and you'll see paragraph three there is entirely deleted, which states fences of wrought iron, stone, or wood are encouraged. Privacy fence shall not exceed six feet in height, which are generally restricted aside for rear yards. So, in answer to your question, yes, I believe that the zoning amendments that were just approved and recommended to, to be recommended to Troy City Council would delete the ban on chain link fences.
Which staff indicated we then go into our...
It's going to be referenced in our design manual. The new draft ordinance adopts a design manual. We're going to come back with a design manual that will prohibit chain link fencing.
Does he have any other comments?
Only that I was playing the paint black for historical reasons. I've really put a lot of money into this building and to restore it to its natural look, and it's a beautiful building. And it's just unfortunate that the contractor did not get the permit first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Mr. Titterington, I think you're...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I guess, timing-wise, as far as tabling, we have to keep in mind that this was done prior to, it was done in reverse. It was done, and now they're basically asking for forgiveness, which, in any of the zoning code matters that we have, you're not legally "grandfathered" if you've done something illegal in the first place. But beyond that, I think it's important to note, and this was not included in the report and possibly should have been, is that when we look at this area, this area has been targeted by the city, the city staff, administration, the mayor, as well as at least one significant property owner for some renovation redevelopment, starting with, from the cabinet building all the way out to the Spennaker, from the river all the way down to the grain elevator and everything in between. We've got the old fires, well, the soon-to-be-old fire station that is in the process of being sold. We have the dance studio that I believe has been sold. I'm not sure if they closed or not on that, but it's still under contract. Okay. We've got several properties targeted along there. We've got the low dam and the, that's been approved for removal, subject to getting all the grants in place, as well as some of the amenities that we want to add to it, such as a rec trail, such as a boat launch, such as maybe some public gathering space as well. So, you know, that area is not, if we're going to dress up that area, we have to start somewhere. And putting a, I don't know that I quite agree that the privacy fence is a good look. It is very close to the right-of-way.
That's based on what's agrounded.
I understand. It's, I won't get into commentary, I understand that, but if we're going to effect some change, if we're going to promote the redevelopment there, certainly having something that is in support of that and complements that future development more so than just chain link and solid plank privacy fencing, in my opinion, is necessary. So, you know, I'm willing to look at other options myself if there are other designs that want to be put forward, but I'm not in favor of this option.
My comments, when I take a look at these, I don't, I have to take a look at what would happen if this was the first time it came before us, not whether or not the fence was already constructed. You know, what would we be saying, what would we be taking a look at if the applicant was coming forward to put in a chain link fence? And my initial reaction is, not in historic district. This building was built in around 1899, from what I understand, a historic structure. Was chain link fence available about that time? I don't think so. I think you can see the chain link fence, and it's pretty visible. Anytime you come down Water Street, the open area behind the soup kitchen would be roughly very visible, in my opinion, from Water Street, and it has not addressed that. The Oakfield Tavern is within very close proximity, and having a chain link fence on a neighboring property within a historic district does not bode well for what they're trying to do historically. I don't believe that we're wearing our hat properly as the governors of the historic district, under whatever that historic definition is, and we've all been burdened with trying to figure that out, by permitting a chain link fence, particularly in light of the fact that it violates the current ordinance. So, I would have to agree with staff that the permit be denied. But what's, any other comments or questions of staff or the applicant, or standing at the podium? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would have to again ask which controls the industrial regulation, the industrial zoning or the historic zoning, because this does affect the building's, the owner's ability to operate the building for its intended and historical use, which is as a warehouse and under the industrial zoning is permitted the fence.
Nothing that we're being asked to do today prohibits you from putting in a fence, as long as the fence complies with the historic district regulations.
So, they are...
Chain link does not.
So, it is the commission's determination that they are cumulative, cumulative requirements?
I don't understand your question, but...
But aside from the authorization under the industrial zoning, the, you're saying that the historic preservation overlay has zoning requirements control?
First of all, the historic preservation overlay district hasn't been approved by council yet, so that's not there, okay? So, we're not to that point.
Well, the amendments have, we still have one.
Excuse me, the amendments have been approved, yeah, so. But as far as the current regulations as we have right now, the fencing can't be chain link in a historic district. I think it's pretty obvious.
So, those regulations control the position?
They control my mind, yes. Any other questions or comments? We had before a staff report suggesting that the permit be denied. Commission will take any action?
As a final comment, we would, Mr. White...
One more.
But Mr. White would represent that he has had discussions with Mr. Ida Miller regarding the fence and was advised that should he paint the fence black, that the commission would likely approve.
That's not the application before us?
It was in a phone call with him calling me.
Is that true, staff? Would you approve a chain link fence even if it's painted black?
We would not approve a chain link fence. It wasn't my final determination when I had a conversation with the owner with Blinds by Mark.
Okay. Commission will take any action on the application?
I do have a question to clarify. The building you're saying sits in an industrial-zoned area?
It does.
So, you're asking, does this historical overlay trump?
Yes.
That?
Yeah.
And so, I guess that's the question. If it is in two zoned areas, if it's in an industrial zone and it's in the historical overlay, which one of those trumps the other?
The overlay overlays on top of the industrial. It's not a separate zoning district. It's an additional level of review because it's in the historic district that the planning commission acts. If this was not an historic district, the matter wouldn't have come in front of the planning commission. Is that correct?
That is correct. Okay. For the third time, commission will take any action on this matter?
I'll move to deny the application.
There's a motion to deny the application. Is there a second for the motion? I'll second. Mr. Westmeyer, second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to make a comment.
You go right ahead.
I am very sympathetic about why you need a fence there. You've made a great case why there needs to be a fence there. It's just unfortunate that it doesn't meet the standards as they are now.
Is the stand, have you been in the neighborhood lately?
Yes.
Has anyone walked the neighborhood? That place is disgusting.
I made a point of looking at it, and that's why I was sympathetic, because in the context of where it is, I think it's an improvement. However, the ordinance says what it says.
Well, the first map I pulled up, it had a historical map in Troy, and it was all color-coded. Mine was left off. And I brought that to their attention, and then they changed it. So, there's something fishy going on.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
And I will get to the bottom of it.
Can you give a motion and a second? Any further discussion about the planning commission? Please call the roll.
Mr. McGary?
Keep in mind that an affirmative vote means that the petitions, the applicant, would be denied.
Yes.
That was your vote?
Your vote was yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay, next we have a historic district application for 12124 West Canal Street. The staff have a report.
Will we be served with a notice of the denial so that we can seek a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes, sir. You'll have the right to appeal. The board is at peace. I'll provide that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Next, I would like to get your staff.
Yes, sir. So, this is a request by Canal Street Holdings LLC for the planning commission to consider the installation of 24 double-hung windows, four doors, and exterior lighting at the property located at 120-124 West Canal Street. The property is located in the R5 Single Family Residential District. In prior to 2013, the original siding has been covered with gray vinyl siding. Multiple windows have been replaced with vinyl on the rear of the property. The windows on the west side have been broken or otherwise damaged due to the overgrowth of the property. Again, this is a request for 24 double-hung windows and four doors with exterior lighting. All the windows and doors will be essentially all extra-white color. The replacement doors will be four Masonite HD steel doors. Staff recommends approval of the proposed window, door, and light replacement based on the following: The proposed replacements do not alter the... The proposed replacements do not alter the contributing features on the OHI. The proposed replacements do not detract from the historic integrity of the district.
That'll conclude my report. Any questions to staff?
No for approval.
I'll second.
Motion in support for the motion. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Wulkey?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Next, the resuming application for 7 acres, thereabouts, at 2601 West Main Street. Does staff have a report?
Yes, so this is a request for a zoning amendment for a planned development at 2601 West Main Street, which consists of 7.1 acres. It's on West Main, west of North King's Chapel Drive. The proposed development consists of multiple principal storage buildings on the single lot, which led to this PD request. The overall layout includes six total buildings, about 75,000 square feet, that are being proposed for storage units. One building will be climate-controlled. There's also going to be 91 spaces to be used for outdoor storage, or 81,827 square feet. That's in Exhibit 8.1. The landscaping, there's a required buffer of 25 feet along the west lot line in between the R7 and the requested PD, which is M2 underlined. Three six-foot tall mounds with twelve Norway spruce trees will be in the buffer strip. These buffer strips do follow the current zoning code. Six peripheral trees with compartmented shrubs are being provided for the employee customer parking along West Main, and those will be spaced at 40-foot increments. The parking lot, the customer employee parking lot, does meet the standards of the zoning code. The building materials, the front facades of each building will be constructed of brick. The main office building will include a block base, a cap, with a brick body. The top of the main building will include a aluminum decker, two brackets. The main office building will have the most visibility from West Main Street, and that's, the elevation drawing has been included. The Troy concrete handsome plan indicates this area to be used for future industrial uses, so this would meet that request. So due to the straightforward nature of this amendment request, the compatibility of the proposed zoning matching the surrounding zoning properties, and the fact that City Councils require the fully public hearing, if the request proceeds on, staff does not feel that a public hearing before the planning commission is warranted. It is recommended that planning commission make a positive recommendation to City Council regarding the planned development application based on the following. The PD request complies with a comprehensive plan of future land use, and the PD complies with the general plan requirements of 1145.16. That'll conclude my report.
Any questions to staff?
Not a question, but a comment. Ordinarily, I would be opposed to taking an industrial district and turn it into storage. But based on the configuration of this particular location, I guess that that's probably a reasonable thing to do.
This is a permitted use within the industrial district, so...
That's correct.
This is a permitted use within the industrial district, within the current M2 district?
Correct. It has to go planned development because there's multiple principal buildings.
Is that the only reason? Are there any problems with the side setbacks, or...
There's no issues with the setbacks, and they do exceed our landscaping requirements.
This is opposite King's Chapel, right, on the other side of 41, or... Yeah, it is. On the north side. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just fill me in. When this becomes... If it passes City Council, it'll become its own ordinance. Is that correct, or not?
Essentially, yeah. It'll be an ordinance that's approved by City Council to provide the PD overlay on top of it with any criteria you wish to place in.
Will these maps, then, become part of the ordinance?
They will be, yes.
So that buildings will be configured, they will have to be configured according to this, or they'll be violating the ordinance?
That's correct.
These notes that are right here that I cannot read, will that then become a part of the ordinance?
It will be, and those are...
It'll also refer to the attached exhibits, which weren't available to us to look at. So, right? I mean, the only exhibit we have is D2. And I've noticed that there's a bunch of others. There's A, B, C, D. That's some of our little descriptions, so that's no problem.
So this is step one of the three-step process. This is the general plan. It will come back before the planning commission with a final development plan, which you will make a recommendation on as well. So this is kind of the general, this is what our plan to do. It'll come back with the second step, which is approved by staff. And then the third step, the final development plan, which has all the items that will be recorded, that will come back before you, before it goes to City Council.
And it'll have all the exhibits?
That's correct.
It'll be in a format that we can read?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That answered my question. Thank you.
So I will make a motion that we not hold a public hearing at this level.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, not to hold a public hearing. Any further discussion on that issue? Keep in mind, an affirmative vote is not to have a public hearing. Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Wulkey?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Motion is adopted. Planning commission will not hold a public hearing.
Commission will take any action on the recommendation to City Council?
I'll make a motion to recommend the City Council.
Affirmative recommendation?
Yes.
There's been a motion in support for the motion to make an affirmative recommendation to Troy City Council. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wulkey?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Staff have anything else to come before the commission today?
We do not, thank you.
Commission members have anything else they want to discuss? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Mr. Westmeyer, all who's in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.